Regular meeting number forty-nine will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
Together, let us pray. Most merciful God, our citizens stand on the eve of Election Day in which we will choose candidates and decide issues that impact the citizens of this city, county, and state. The members of Columbus City Council join all citizens in asking for your inspiration and assistance as the electorate goes to the polls tomorrow. Challenges of a serious nature face those voting tomorrow. May our citizens not shrink from or become apathetic to those challenges, but embrace that precious right and freedom to express ourselves by casting ballots for our civic officials and the issues facing us this election cycle. May tomorrow be a peaceful day, a day marked by a firm commitment to the rule of law and the common good of all people. Whoever is elected tomorrow, we pray that your wisdom will guide their public service, always keeping in mind the poor, the forgotten, the marginalized, and the vulnerable ones. We ask your blessing on our nation, our state, our county, and city as we go to the polls to exercise our franchise, and thus mobilize for the future under your loving guidance. Amen.
Harden Klein, Paige Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
Thank you. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Sir, second. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein, Paige Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Harden?
No.
Councilmember Klein? Councilmember Page? Councilmember Paley?
Thank you, Council President Ginther. Tonight, I have the honor and pleasure of introducing the resolution for Ms. Anna Maria Peralas-Ling. Ms. Peralas-Ling and your family, could you approach the podium? The resolution documents your incredible service to many of the people who live in the city of Columbus. I want to mention just a few things. First, you are so much more than the Midwest Regional Director for Belle Harbor Communities. In fact, I have it on good authority that you not only created the concept and tagline of the Belle Harbor Way, but you are the creator of what that means. You have actually implemented what community is. You ensure that no one who lives in these communities ever feels alone or helpless, from job assistance to educational opportunities to seeing needs and filling them. Your team seem to be everywhere. You are the epitome of what it means to make Columbus the best place to live, work, and raise a family. Tonight, we salute you not just for receiving recognition from the Ohio Hispanic Coalition, but for all you have done and continue to do for all those who live in Belle Harbor Communities and beyond. Congratulations on your many accomplishments. First, I will move for passage.
Harden Klein, Paige Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
With the resolution being adopted, Ms. Peralas-Ling, the floor is yours.
Thank you, council. I'm just humbled because I don't know what I did, okay? I tried to do the right thing. That's how I was brought up, do the right thing. Right is always right, wrong is always wrong. And I am very privileged to work for Belle Harbor Management of Ohio, for a private landlord management company owner that has allowed me to bring his message, our message, to Columbus, and that is that all people in rental properties deserve the same respect and dignity as anybody else, and we all want the same thing, which is good schools, good home for our family, and that's the Belle Harbor Way. I'm privileged and blessed that I have my family here, my husband, my daughter, my son-in-law, my grandbaby, my baby, my best friend Adriana, who also does a lot, and part of my community team, which is Josh there. So on behalf of Belle Harbor, on behalf of myself and my family, thank you, God, above all, and thank you all, and I hope my mom was watching because this would have been a big one. Thank you.
I have one other announcement. The city of Columbus welcomes you to celebrate Veterans' Day with the annual parade through downtown on November 6, 2015. The Veterans' Day Ceremony and Parade is dedicated to honoring all those who have served and currently serve in the United States Armed Forces. Our Veterans' Day Parade is nationally recognized as one of the largest veterans' parades by the Department of Defense. The day starts with the annual ceremony and observance of Veterans' Day, which will be held from 10:15 to 11:30 a.m. here in city council chambers located at 90 West Broad Street, second floor. Our special guest speaker will be Major General Deborah Ashenhurst. The annual City of Columbus Veterans' Day Parade, sponsored by the Military Veterans Education Foundation, Milvets, will kick off at noon, starting at Nationwide Plaza and North High Street, proceeding south on High Street, then turning west on Broad Street. The parade will disband at the future site of the new Veterans Memorial. All participation and events are free and open to the public. We celebrate the seventieth year anniversary for World War II vets, the greatest generation this year, and Mayor Coleman will be honored for his service to the military and veterans' community as Grand Marshal of the parade. Don't forget to bring a new unwrapped toy for the Marine Corps, Toys for Tots campaign, and I look forward to seeing everyone at the Veterans' Day Affairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Ryan? Any comments from our elected officials? City auditor? City attorney? Judge Barrows, anything from the court?
No.
There any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of thirty-day legislation by the city clerk. Sir, second. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein, Paige Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read the record? The ordinance numbers of thirty-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading.
Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2323-2387-2484-2487-2527-2533-2015. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2229-2015. Technology Committee ordinance is 2529 and 2628-2015. Rules and Reference Committee ordinance 1921-2015.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolution of Expression 256X-2015. Finance Committee ordinance is 2409 and 2552-2015. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 2492-2613-2622-2648-2677-2015. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 2597-2611-2631-2675-2015. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 2545-2578-2015. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2379-2386-2469-2497-2561-2576-2603-2015. Development Committee ordinance is 2637-2653-2015. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2522-2612-2644-2646-2015. Judiciary and Court Administration ordinance is 2643-2654-2655-2656-2015. Technology Committee ordinance is 2315-2382-2577-2015.
Thank you. We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome to council chambers. If you'd come forward to the podium. You've signed up to speak, I believe, in support of 2637-2015. If you could share your name, address, any organizations you represent. Sir, you have three minutes to speak to the ordinance.
Nathaniel George Wilkins, 1612 Arlington Avenue. The chairman is solely vacant in the neighborhood, probably in the North London area. First of all, I just want to speak on 2637, holding a land bank, 1167 Ducksbury Avenue. First of all, I just want to know how long that this particular property had been in the land bank, what the timeframe of it, and I know that I'm all for it, but I just would like to know what's going to be done with this structure. Also, this other property should be taken into the land bank. Again, I just want to know how long that this property had been in the land bank. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Any questions? Comments from Mr. Wilkins? Director Shoney, any additional information on 2637-2015?
Thank you, President Ginther, members of council. That property is going to be rehabilitated, and I believe it will be put up for sale. And if you'll indulge me for a moment, I do want to brag a little bit on my land bank team. I hope that all of you were able to catch the Columbus Dispatch article on Saturday highlighting what a great job the team has been doing in terms of putting these properties back into productive use and, at the same time, generating significant amounts of program money to allow us to keep doing the great work. John Turner, Riza Rayazi, and their whole team do a fantastic job, so I just wanted to raise that up to you all and hope that you'd seen it over the weekend. Thanks.
Director, I think Mr. Wilkins' question was about how long it had been in the land bank. If you don't have that information, if you could have your team follow up with him after the meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, certainly.
Any other discussion regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none, I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions. Sir, second. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein, Paige Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
Consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of thirty-day table in the emergency legislation. The first committee is the Public Service Committee. Councilmember Harden chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Today, in Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have 2598-2015 to amend the 2015 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders and contracts with multiple vendors for the purchase of commodities, supplies, and materials for pavement marking materials, signed manufacturing materials, school flashers, and various traffic signal commodities for the Division of Traffic Management, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,190,000 from the Streets and Highways G.O. Bonds Fund for this purpose and to declare an emergency. If there are no further comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Harden Klein, Paige Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Ginther. That's all I have in Public Service and Transportation.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. Our next committee is the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. One piece in public safety tonight, 2592-2015. To amend the 2015 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer $3,593,746.13 between projects within the Safety Voted Bond Fund, to authorize the Finance and Management Director into a contract with Robertson Construction Services for the construction of a new fire station, to authorize the expenditure of $8,914,000 from the Safety Voted Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. It's great news. Deputy Director Jean Gardella?
Yes.
Would you like to comment?
President Ginther, Chairman Klein, members of council, thank you very much for entertaining this ordinance this evening. This is obviously a very important piece of legislation for the Public Safety and Division of Fire, fulfills a commitment that we made when the decision was made to move Station Three to Green Lawn Avenue, and we said we would come back to this site at 150 East Fulton Street to construct Station Two. The advantage is there, of course. It eliminates a station that's over fifty years old. It also actually will provide additional medic to service the south end of downtown, but also into neighborhoods close by, such as German Village. So we're very excited about this ordinance. We had five really close bids on this project. The low bid withdrew their bid shortly after submission. The second low bid did not complete all the addendum information, so we are requesting award to Robertson Construction for the construction of this fire station. It'll be about an eighteen-month schedule, once things get going, so probably sometime mid-year to later, 2017, we hope to enter that facility, and this will be a lead facility as well, and, you know, with various improvements for HVAC, et cetera. So we're very excited about this, and we appreciate the consideration of council. This contract will also include demolition of the current station as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. I see Mr. Richard back there, the president of Local 67, who's out advocating every day for the men and women of fire, and the fruits of that labor is evidenced tonight in 2592-2015, which I asked my colleagues to support in fulfilling the commitment that the city made for the south end of downtown and the adjacent neighborhoods of providing continuous and effective and sufficient EMS and fire service to those neighborhoods, including the downtown neighborhood and the surrounding areas. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Harden Klein, Paige Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
Moving on to Public Utilities, sir. 2418, nope, 2481, 2015. To authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a construction contract with Underground Utilities, Inc. for the Simpson Drive Area Waterline Improvements Project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $3,077,533.14 from the Water System Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund, to authorize an appropriation and expenditure of $3,077,533.14 within the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund for the Division of Water, and to authorize an amendment to the 2015 capital improvements budget. Any questions or comments about this water line project? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Harden Klein, Paige Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
2485, 2015. To authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify an existing professional engineering services agreement with Brown and Caldwell for detailed design services for the southerly wastewater treatment plant chemically enhanced primary treatment preliminary treatment project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $3,648,350 from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $3,648,350 from the G.O. Bond Fund, to amend the 2015 capital improvements budget, and to declare an emergency. Director Davies.
Chairman Klein, President Ginther, members of council, you may recall we had a piece of legislation not too long ago on this same project. There are actually three different projects on this work that's being done at our wastewater treatment plant, and if you recall, it will allow us in times of heavy rain to have another way to treat water rather than having it overflow directly into the river.
Any questions or comments for Director Davies? I move for passage.
Harden Klein, Paige Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
2535, 2015. To authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a planned modification of the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with Arcadis for the Hapcreman Water Plant and Dublin Road Water Plant standby power projects for the Division of Water, to authorize a transfer expenditure of up to $2,68,900 from the Water Works Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund, and to amend the 2015 capital improvement project. Any questions or comments for the Director on this standby power project that Arcadis will be doing for the city? I move for passage.
Harden Klein, Paige Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
Council President, if it's okay, I'd like to move to Rules and Reference and read a piece that's sponsored by Councilmember Tyson. The piece is 2658, 2015. To enact new chapter 362 of the Columbus City Codes to provide for the administration and collection of the municipal income tax accruing on and after Jan. 1, 2016 according to those provisions mandated by the Ohio Legislature by the passage of amended substitute House Bill Five. I'd like to turn the floor over to Mindy Frank to maybe give an opportunity to what we're voting on here, to the public.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein, President Ginther, members of council. On December 14, 2014, Governor Kasich signed House Bill Five, otherwise known as the Municipal Income Tax Reform Bill. The bill modifies the language of Ohio Revised Code 718 Municipal Income Tax and mandates the provisions found within that chapter as amended be adopted by municipal corporations imposing an income tax and that those provisions be effective January 1, 2016. Failure to enact the mandated provisions with an effective date of 1/1/16 will result in the prohibition of the city of Columbus from enforcing its income tax. The bill is an attempt by the state legislature to standardize the administration and collection of municipal income tax across the state of Ohio. These provisions relate only to tax accruing on or after January 1, 2016. Tax accruing prior to that date will be administered according to the current laws of the city of Columbus and the state of Ohio. As a result of the concurrent administration and enforcement of liabilities occurring before January 1, 2016, and on or after January 1, 2016, it is necessary to enact a new Columbus City Codes chapter relating to post 1116 liabilities while retaining current 361. Due to the statute of limitations applicable to income tax issues, these two chapters will operate concurrently for up to nine years. It's important to note that none of the provisions of House Bill Five will be applicable to filings received with regard to the 2015 tax year, but it will be applicable to tax withheld from employee wages as well as declarations of estimated tax and related payments filed and remitted in 2016. A number of provisions within the bill and by mandate within the new code will impact Columbus revenue, and if you indulge me, I'll just kind of briefly go over some of these issues. There's been a change with regard to the casual entrant or twelve-day rule. Current law permits an individual to work in Columbus for twelve days without requiring tax to be withheld to Columbus, but after that twelfth day, tax is to be withheld to Columbus, not only prospectively, but retroactively for the first twelve days. House Bill Five increased the number of days during which the tax is not required to be withheld from twelve to twenty days, and requires only that the tax be withheld after the twenty-first day with no retroactivity with regard to the first twenty days, so those days are not subject to the Columbus tax. Columbus is required, beginning in 2017, to recognize activity in 2016 to allow a five-year net operating loss carryforward. Columbus has never permitted a net operating loss carryforward, and regardless of whether liability is due to Columbus, has taken care of and provided services to its corporate citizens. The provisions of the bill establish a five-year phase-in with 50% of the net operating loss being permitted during that period, with full net operating loss being enacted in 2023. With regard to withholding tax from employee wages, those businesses with less than a half a million dollars in gross receipts need to withhold tax from the wages of employees only to the city in which their primary location is situs. This will artificially increase the amount of tax withheld from those employers, but due to the fact that tax is due only where an individual works or where they reside, this will result in an increased number of refund requests from non-resident employees of those businesses. Columbus will be required to allow business losses that occur outside of its jurisdiction to offset Columbus gain. This, too, will result in revenue loss, as Columbus has previously allowed only Columbus losses to offset Columbus gains. So if a business is operating in Worthington as well as Columbus and has a loss in Worthington and not in Columbus, they will be permitted to use the Worthington loss to offset Columbus gain. No remittance of tax is required of taxpayers filing a return that indicates a liability of $10 or less. In 2015, for tax year 2014, Columbus received $15,789 payments reflecting liabilities between $1 and $10 for a total amount of $84,011.05. That income will be lost to the city of Columbus. Columbus is not required to issue refunds of overpayments that are $10 or less. In 2015, for tax year 2014, 440 refunds in the amount of $10 or less, between $10 and $1, were issued for a total refunded of $2,333. So that hardly offsets the loss that we're going to realize from the unpaid tax of $10 or less. In order to comply with House Bill Five, the newly enacted Ohio Revised Code Chapter 718, this ordinance must be adopted by council with an effective date of 1/1/16. As an added note, the Ohio Legislative Services Commission published a fiscal notes and local impact statement with regard to House Bill Five on December 9 of 2014, the first statement of which, under the heading of "Local Fiscal Highlights," is as follows. "The bill's provisions are likely to create, overall, a net revenue loss to municipalities. The revenue impact on a specific municipality will be dependent on changes made by the bill to existing income tax ordinances. Though total revenue losses to municipalities are undetermined and delayed to future fiscal years, they may be significant, potentially millions of dollars annually." And I have copies of that fiscal report if you're interested in reading it. Are there any questions that I could answer for you?
So is there anything good that comes of this bill?
Actually, the two areas, as noted in the fiscal report, that might have resulted in increased revenue to the city of Columbus, or any municipality for that matter, would come from, one, the amended code providing for the city to be able to obtain federal information and schedules from taxpayers. We do that already, so there will be no income increase realized from that. And there is a limitation on the 2106 business expense that's allowed to taxpayers, which may save us in some administrative work but realizes very, very little gain.
Do you or, and I'm going to give Mr. Dorian an opportunity to speak as well, but do you or Mr. Dorian have any sort of estimated projection of what our deficit, or at least loss of income tax, is going to be due to the enactment of this bill?
Aside from our being able to look at some of the issues, as I mentioned, with regard to the tax liabilities of $10 or less, those things that are known, that we can actually pull reports up on, we have no way of knowing what the net operating loss carryforward is going to mean to us, and we have no way of knowing what the loss offset is going to mean, because we've never had any statistical information gathered with regard to that. We've not had those things in place. So this is a big question for us. The casual entrance rule will impact us negatively also with the loss of revenue from individuals working twenty days or less in our community.
Any questions for Mrs. Frank before we move over to Mr. Dorian?
So just to be clear, even though, you know, I see this as a bad thing, or not good for our city, a no vote from this council would mean that we'd forfeit the right to collect income taxes?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
So I know which way you're voting. Mr. Dorian?
Thank you, Chairman Klein and all council members. I'd like to kind of put this in a little bit of perspective. This effort on what we now call House Bill Five, the original effort started This effort on what we now call House Bill 5, the original effort started in the first quarter of 2012. So we are here now, three and a half years later, with the legislation before you on a local level. I would repeat that the legislation indicates that if the cities do not adopt it, effective the first of the year of '16, we will be prohibited from collecting municipal income tax, and quite frankly, that would amount, we might as well close our front door and our side doors, because that would mean about $800 million loss. Obviously, it's, you're left in an untenable position. Even though there are several onerous factors in this new legislation, I want to commend Ms. Frank, who has spent, I think, the better part of her career for the last three years defending the cities in Ohio before the legislature and before several committees. Many of the meetings that resulted in this bill were held, quite frankly, in our office. I don't want to say that with all gratitude, because certainly we lost a lot of the arguments, but I candidly have to say to you, please adopt the legislation, because I don't know where we'd be without it. And again, I thank Ms. Frank for all her efforts. Things would be far more onerous if you did not have Ms. Frank's personal involvement in this. In my view, she is the most astute and knowledgeable municipal income tax person in the state of Ohio and probably beyond that, so I would ask your adoption of the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Dorian. Very kind words from Ms. Frank.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Page.
This can be either for Ms. Frank or Auditor Dorian. We, since this comes into effect in January of next year, this upcoming tax season will not be affected.
Correct. Correct. For 2015, we'll be using the current law that's in place. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, and I'll provide you with a copy of the fiscal report from Legislative Services.
At the request of Mr. Dorian, I move for passage.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
And that's all in rules and references, and I'd be remiss not to give kudos to Councilmember Tyson, and she's absent today, but her work in getting this legislation prepared for council.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. On the Administration Committee, we have ordinance 2615-2015 to accept memorandum of understanding 2015-06, 2015-08, and 2015-09, executed between representatives of the City of Columbus and American Federation of State County Municipal Employees, ASME Ohio Council 8, Local 1632, which amend the collective bargaining contract April 1, 2014 through March 31, 2017, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Ginther. That's all we have in the Administration Committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Anything else to come before council this evening? We do have two non-agenda speakers that will take momentarily, but if there's nothing else to come before council, then we'll reconvene at 6:30 for zoning. If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
Stand adjourned. We'll take non-agenda speakers momentarily. Regular meeting number 50 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Sarah Seguin, clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
Any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
Now go to the zoning committee. I chair that committee. All members serve on the committee. This evening in zoning, we have 2624-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.037-R2F, Residential District 3312.49. Minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3332.05A for area district lot with requirements, 3332.21 building lines, 3332.25B maximum side yards required, and 3332.26C2 minimum side yard permitted. Columbus City Codes for the property located at 923 East Long Street, 43205, to permit a child daycare center or type A home daycare facility with reduced development standards in the R2F residential district, and to repeal ordinance number 2798-2014 passed on December 8, 2014. The applicant is Capital City Holdings, LLC, care of Thomas F. Kibbe, Attorney, 41 South High Street, 2000 Huntington Center, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. The proposed use is child daycare center on type A home daycare facility. City Department's recommendation is approval. Near East Area Commission recommended approval. Any questions, comments, discussion? If not, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
Passed. Next, we have 2626-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03-C4. Permitted uses, 3309.14 Height District, 3312.49BC Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, and 3356.11C, C4 District Setback Lines. Columbus City Codes for the property located at 930 North High Street, 43201, to permit a mixed-use development with reduced development standards in the C4 Commercial District. The applicant is The Wood Companies, care of Michael T. Shannon, Attorney, 500 South Front Street, Suite 1200, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. The proposed use is mixed-use development. City Department's recommendation is approval. The Italian Village Area Commission recommended approval. Any questions or comments, discussion regarding this legislation? Seeing none, first of all, I move to amend to emergency. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
Amended to emergency, and next move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
Passed. Is there anything else to come before the zoning committee this evening? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. Have a good evening.